... is working, that's good to know. Welcome to the second of two sets of interviews for the council vacancy. Ms. Trazo, how we doing?
We're good. We're good. I can hear you.
Oh, okay. Fantastic. So I have 6:02. We will do just a little housekeeping before we get started and then we'll roll right in. So first and foremost, now is a perfectly good time to check to make sure that your phones are off, silent, or set to vibrate. Second, as you've probably put together, this meeting is being recorded and we are being livestreamed to the public. If there's anyone you want to message right now and say, "Look ma, I'm on TV," you can check the City Facebook page and the City YouTube. Now that the livestream is up, it should be right there at the top. You will be invited, if you're here to interview, you'll be invited to the podium by name. And then I am going to ask you to start with your name and address. You're going to be asked a couple of questions that seem silly but establish for the record your legal eligibility to take a vacancy on council. You'll then be given three minutes to make an opening statement. I will try to subtly do one of these if we're at time. And then council members are going to be able to ask you questions to which you will be able to respond. Once we're done up here, I will thank you for coming to join us and then invite you to make a brief closing statement. Does that make sense to everyone? Fantastic. You'll give me, let's say, 30 seconds to get myself together. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Harris, do I need to take care of any -- I know we need to do the roll call of members. Do I need to take care of any business regarding last session's minutes?
You do not, no. The minutes are not on the agenda.
Okay. Excellent. Mr. Harris, if you would please call the roll of members.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royal?
Here.
Ms. Beckett?
Here.
Mr. Collex?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz?
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Here.
I'm so sorry. I neglected this. Forgive me for being out of sorts. As you are willing and able, please join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Moving right along, we will begin with Ms. Charlotte Katzenmoyer. Good evening, Ms. Katzenmoyer.
Hello. How are you?
Good. Can you begin with your full name and address?
Charlotte Katzenmoyer, 233 Lancaster Avenue.
Excellent. Are you 18 years of age?
Yes.
Have you been a resident of the city of Lancaster for a year or more prior to this date?
Yes, I have.
Excellent. And do you hold any office or title which would render you ineligible to take a seat on council?
No.
Excellent. You have three minutes for an opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. My name is Charlotte Katzenmoyer. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss my candidacy and to serve Lancaster city residents for the next two years as an appointed member of city council. In a recent LNP report, Council President Smith-Wadeell states that the ideal candidate for appointment is someone with a different perspective who brings something new to the table, someone who has time to serve, and someone who is on the same page as city council regarding the need to increase access to affordable housing in the city. I believe my candidacy meets this criteria and my service will fulfill these expectations. First, I would bring the perspective of a woman engineer who has spent the bulk of my professional life in local government and public service. With children that have successful professional careers across the country, I am of the age where family does not demand a great deal of my time. Thus, I have time to serve. I come with a perspective based on more than 23 years in municipal government, with primary responsibility for directing and managing public works and water utilities, operation and services in Redding, Lancaster, and now Harrisburg. Let me be clear, public works departments everywhere deliver core essential services to residents every hour of every day. Traffic signals change, toilets flush, water runs, parks are welcoming, streets are clear, trash is collected, all because of public works departments. In short, public works departments make cities livable. If appointed, I will bring this unique perspective. For the past three years, I have served as CEO of Capital Region Water in Harrisburg, a municipal authority with an operating budget of $52 million and a robust capital budget of more than $200 million over the next 10 years. Like Lancaster, Capital Region Water has an aging infrastructure and a customer base where one in three people are living in poverty. I have worked diligently to find ways to help those that need help with ever-increasing but necessary water rate increases. In Lancaster and now in Harrisburg, I have negotiated consent decrees with federal officials, lobbied state and federal elected officials for grant funds, testified before congressional committees, convened scores of neighborhood meetings with residents, and worked across the table with labor unions, and worked with bipartisan council bodies throughout my career. And I thoroughly understand the roles required to serve in all these various capacities. I hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's degree in environmental engineering. This educational training, my professional experience, and my understanding of municipal budgeting and finance would inform and enhance my service as a city council appointee, particularly in the role of public works committee chair. In that capacity, I would be available to Director Campbell at his request to brainstorm on the challenges that he faces, understand where there are resources to help him, or champion practical legislation that will make his department more effective. I am also up to the challenge of working with each of you to address issues of homelessness, affordable housing, and quality-of-life issues found in every neighborhood in the city. We are blessed to live in a community that is rich in volunteers, agencies, faith-based communities, and nonprofits that deliver outstanding social services every day. It is correct that city government does not deliver social services, but we can point to several examples of how city government can support the success and facilitate positive outcomes for our social service partners and for affordable housing advocates and developers. The last two years of dealing with the COVID pandemic has hit our city hard. Our government, our school district, our businesses, and our residents continue to suffer from its effects. Together, we can look for ways to assist local businesses and residents to get back on their feet. I have many ideas and look forward to sharing them with you at the appropriate time. Finally, if provided the opportunity, I look forward to serving alongside each of you, bringing my experience as a resource to this role, and learning from each of you and your unique expertise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katzenmoyer.
All right. Councilors, actually, if you don't mind, it will be easiest to begin by just going down the row. So, Councilor Royal?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Katzenmoyer, for presenting to us today. As far as the public works department here in the city of Lancaster, what opportunities do you see for areas of improvement that as a city councilor you would like to contribute your expertise to?
Well, as I said, Public Works delivers core essential services. So I would look for ways with Director Campbell to find, is there legislation that would help him be more effective? You know, I'm not looking to delve into his operations. That's his role. But as a councilor, I think that our role is to work with the directors to ensure that they're delivering those core essential services that make affordable housing, you know, that developers want to come in and develop affordable housing, and that we work with him to address homelessness, because many of the homeless are in parks throughout the city. So looking for legislation or ways that's going to make it better for city residents from a quality-of-life perspective.
Thank you. It's all Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for being here this evening, Ms. Katzenmoyer. What do you believe is the most significant challenge facing the city of Lancaster today?
So I've heard from city council that one of their priorities is affordable housing. That it's certainly admirable to have certain strategic priorities. Every organization should do that. I do it within my organization. But in order to be successful addressing certain strategic priorities, you have to do all of the services well, those core essential services. So you have to have, you have to support public safety so that residents feel comfortable and safe in the community. And that attracts affordable housing as well as market-rate housing. You have to have inspectors, housing inspectors, or building code inspectors who are doing their job well, and you have to support them. So all of the essential services that the city provides has to be done well in order to promote all of those things. So as a city council, it's a matter of holding those departments and directors accountable and making sure that they are serving the public and that they're doing their jobs well, and looking to provide better legislation, new regulations that might serve the community better.
Thank you. Council President, may I ask a follow-up question? What motivated you to seek this position at this time?
So I think anyone who knows the service that I provided to the city in a director's role, I served with passion. And I don't feel that I'm done with serving my community. I feel that I can provide the expertise that is the reason that I got into public service in the first place. Working as an engineer for a consulting firm, I was doing projects all over the state in different communities and didn't feel that I was giving back to that community. So I wanted to get into public service to work in one community and see the changes that I could make. And I feel I have a lot more to give to a community that I love.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mrs. Katzenmoyer, for being here tonight. My first question for you is, what do you believe is the value of diversity in our city?
So I believe that from a very personal perspective. I have a family, I come back from a background that has diversity in my family. I have children that were raised as Muslim. I started my career as a covered engineer. So dealing with diversity, I've felt it personally. So diversity is something that, I don't even know how you put words to how much value it brings, because all those different perspectives make the city how great it is. That's one of the reasons I love the city, living in the city, is the diversity. So it's something that I personally believe in. I've worked very hard in Harrisburg with an MWDVE program where our contracting has certain goals, that we are awarding contracts to MWDVE firms. And I believe that's something that Lancaster could learn from.
Okay. Mr. President, can I ask the following question? Okay. At this time, Mrs. Katzenmoyer, the person filling this position would become the chair of public works committee. How do you feel your skills or background would serve you in that position?
So I think I've responded to that with the narrative that I started with. My 23 years in public service has been in public works, starting in Redding and then Lancaster and Harrisburg. So in Harrisburg, it might be just focused on water utilities, but that is part of public works here. So my education is also in civil and environmental engineering. So both my education and my expertise is in public works. And I would provide that expertise, serving in the role as committee chair, and to Director Campbell. If, you know, I don't believe in reinventing the wheel. It's looking to other best examples or best practices in other communities and trying to implement them here if they fit well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilor Collex. Councilor Craig?
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Katzenmoyer, looking at Lancaster as a whole, what do you think the most unique character of the city is?
The most unique character of the city or the people? The city, the history, the arts, the culture, it's all very unique, and it's something that makes it very desirable to live and work and play here and visit. So I think that this city offers a lot in terms of the physical characteristics of the city, but also the people. You know, when I moved into the city, I was not expecting for it to be as warm and inviting as we are. In my neighborhood, we watch out for each other, we have each other's backs, we work for ways to donate together to organizations. So it's very unique in that way, that it's very inviting. And I think people that come and visit here often want to move here because of that.
Thank you so much. You've covered, I was going to ask you another question, but you've covered that already. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Craig.
That's it.
Councilors, do we have any other questions? Okay. Ms. Katzenmoyer, thank you very much, and it's nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
Sorry. I don't know. My brain is off tonight. Do you have any closing words for us?
I would just reiterate that I would love to serve with all of you. I believe that I have a lot to give to this community, and learning from all of you with your unique expertise would be very valuable to me. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll email you about next steps.
Thank you.
Councilors, are we good to keep moving on? Excellent. Seth Mariscal.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening. Please begin with your full name and your address.
My full name is Seth Peter Mariscal, and my address is 723 College Avenue.
Hey, thanks so much. So just a couple of quick questions. Are you 18 years of age or older?
I am.
Have you been a resident of the city of Lancaster for a year or more as of today?
I have.
Excellent. And then finally, do you hold any position or title that would render you ineligible to take a seat on council?
No, I do not.
Excellent. You have three minutes for an opening statement.
All right. Thank you very much, city council members, press and concerned citizens here and online for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Seth Mariscal. I grew up across multiple cities in several countries over the years, but Lancaster has always been home for us. I remember as a child being amazed at the Duke Street Library, and frankly, I still am when I go in there. It's an incredible place. I recognize that we have many outstanding candidates who have dedicated themselves to community service and have very specific reasons for wanting to serve on city council. What I believe sets me apart is I do not come here representing any special interests or in the pursuit of any political influence. I believe my greatest contribution to city council is my curiosity, my willingness to read policy documents, studies, reports, and supporting documents to analyze budgets, and to collaborate with internal and external influencers to make things happen. Lancaster has been our home for several years now. My wife and I have loved riding our bikes around town, both on errands and for pure enjoyment. As a Hispanic person, I've been able to experience just how diverse we are here. My favorite question is, what brought you here? Lancaster has a way to pull people from all kinds of places and all kinds of reasons, and never quite seem to be able to leave. I love to see representation and opportunity here. People are not just represented in pamphlets, but also in reality. And just looking around the room today, we see evidence of that. This is not to say that Lancaster is a perfect city, but I would say it's above average. Our Bureau of Streets, Traffic, and Fleet have worked hard to fix our streets and improve our traffic. Our Solid Waste and Recycling Bureau have worked hard to improve sustainability in our waste management and implemented fantastic programs with an eye to the future. Water and wastewater are at the cutting edge of sustainable stormwater management to reduce pollution of our waterways. But we do also see our homeless citizens more often than not talked about as something to be dealt with rather than people who need help. There is no one thing that causes homelessness. We've seen that in multiple studies over multiple years. As a city, we are working hard to make these things right, but it is a complex issue with no easy solution. So why would I be the best choice? I'm a doer. I'm a fixer, and I'm extremely curious. I have years of experience with budgets, and I do actually read policies for fun. I love seeing the details and understanding the impact, and I would like to use that to help drive the city towards our collective goals over the next two years.
That was exactly three minutes.
I practiced.
Councilor Royal?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for presenting to us today and making the time to do so. You mentioned about homelessness being a problem in Lancaster City. What are some potential solutions that you would like to see happen through city council as helping the houseless?
Yeah, I think there are recurring themes when it comes to that. Obviously, access to affordable housing is an incredibly important aspect, but so is the economy, so is mental health support, and so are things like helping people get jobs, which we do have a lot of that. But I think you have to treat the core issues that we find and move from there.
Great. Thank you. That is all, Council President.
Thank you. Council Beckett?
Mr. Mariscal, thank you so much for being here this evening. Scroll backing to my questions here. In what ways do you believe that city council members have the greatest impact on residents?
I think city council represents the voice and the needs of the citizens of Lancaster. I think we are able to make the changes that they yearn for, we're able to hear the issues that they are dealing with, and provide solutions in a real and tangible way that will impact them for many years to come.
Thank you very much. And if I may ask a follow-up question? What motivated you to seek this position at this time?
I love Lancaster City. I have wanted to live here before I was able to live here, and now that I'm able to live here, it's exactly what I had hoped it would be. When I heard that a seat was opening, I saw it as an opportunity to help keep things moving in the direction that things are going. I think there are some amazing things at work here, and I would like to see them continue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mariscal, for being here tonight. And the question that I have for you is, what do you believe is the value of diversity in our city?
So, looking at me, you wouldn't guess, but I come up from a Mexican family. My wife is Guatemalan. We're very Hispanic. We've lived in mostly Spanish-speaking countries throughout our entire life. I think the biggest value I see in diversity is twofold. On one hand, there is the demonstration that opportunities exist for everyone and that everyone has a voice. Everyone is important. It doesn't matter that your gender, color of skin, how you identify. What matters is who you are as a citizen and what you do with your time and your influence.
Okay. May I have the, all right, thank you, sir. And at this time, the person filling this position would become the chair of the public works committee. How do you feel your skills or background would serve you in that position?
So unlike other candidates, I don't have a background in public works, but I do have a background in working in B2B industries, working with things like water and wastewater management. I am familiar with how things happen and how things work, and I know how to learn how things happen and how things work. I think the biggest thing there is, of course, speaking to the directors and to the specialists who have been doing this job and understand it better than I ever will. But I certainly intend to apply my interest, my curiosity, and my love for reading to see what studies are out there, what new opportunities are out there, and how I can help support them to continue to do some of the great work they've been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Craig?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Mariscal, tying in what you love most about Lancaster City, if chosen for the position, what would make you the best candidate for that?
So I think the thing I love best about Lancaster City is there's an incredibly deep pool of talent. It's incredible the things you see people creating here and doing. It truly astounds me every time. What I think I can do, if chosen, to best prepare to support city council is going to be to continue to read up on aspects that I'm unfamiliar with, to ask questions, to introduce myself to the people who are open to it, of course, and who can best help me prepare, as well as to find research and other legislation that's been implemented in cities across the country that have shown to work with the issues that we face.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Councilors, are there any follow-up questions? Mr. Mariscal, thank you so much for coming and spending time with us. And of course, we'll be following up, but do you have any closing words for us?
Yes. I thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I appreciate the work that you do. I know it's not easy, and it takes a high degree of skill. And I know that we have some extremely distinguished candidates before you, and I wish you the absolute best, whether I'm here or not, you have my support. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our list is Carol Ann Parry. Okay, next on our list is Carol Ann Parish. Please begin with your full name and your address.
Carol Ann Parish, 417 North Charlotte, Apartment 1.
Ms. Parish, are you 18 years of age?
I am.
Have you been a resident of the city of Lancaster for one year or more prior to this date?
I have.
Excellent. And do you hold any position or title which would preclude you from taking a seat on council?
I do not.
All right, excellent. You have three minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, council members, Mr. Harris, and interested parties. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you in a public, transparent manner, to share with you some of my ideas as to how I might be able to contribute to the city we collectively love, and to continue the legacy of former councilperson Xavier Garcia Molina, whom I first encountered via telephone when he was an incredibly helpful restorative justice case manager for Advo's Restorative Services, where I recently completed a certificate in conflict communication and culture, and with whom I felt an immediate affinity as we share many similar areas of advocacy. I'm genuinely thrilled at the level of interest in this vacancy, as one of my goals as councilperson would be to increase engagement in the city's governance process, not just when it is a topic about which someone is impassioned. During my limited time with you tonight, it is not my intention to talk extensively about the details of my experience, as you are already familiar with my resume, and I invite members of the public here and in person and streaming online wishing to learn more, to do so on my public profile, where you will see the overarching thread is community outreach and service. But I would be remiss if I did not mention my time as the city's neighborhood revitalization administrator, as it is what led to my desire to eventually run for city council, so that I could continue representing those with whom I came in contact, as well as those new to historic Lancaster, the oldest inland city in the United States. In 2005, near the end of Mayor Smith-Gall's administration, I was hired to lead the city's homeowner rehab and blood remediation unit. Then, during Mayor Gray's time in office, I was promoted to a position specifically created to listen to the needs of our city's residents, as well as work with the neighborhood organizations who represented them and bring those needs and ideas back to the administration. One of these listening opportunities was when I organized a spiritual leader forum, after which a community leader said they were impressed, as the task was akin to herding cats. I oversaw the development of plans for the southwest and northeast areas of the city, since those were areas where concentrated attention had not been paid for a number of years. This neighborhood outreach position was the first of its kind, and I was torn when I made the decision to leave in order to raise my only child. Having lived in Lancaster City my entire adult life, with the exception of four years during my early adulthood, when I lived on Diamond Street in West Philadelphia and on Westminster Street in Washington, DC, when I was renting a room in a home on a block where I regularly heard gunshots, and were now home-sell for $1 million plus, I have seen many changes, as have my parents and sisters, who lived in Lancaster in the '60s, when my father worked for the Hamilton Watch Company. It seems that just about every week, we land on yet another top-10 best-of list, which means that, yes, our city is thriving, but who is losing out while Lancaster is being deemed by the New York Post as the new Brooklyn? The answer is those same people who have lost out in Brooklyn, those who took chances during less thriving times and opened small businesses, but who have now been forced out due to increased rent, or because of the building owner's plans to renovate in order to accommodate higher-end endeavors. Those who consciously chose to live in neighborhoods where there was greater diversity, who had lived there their entire lives, but who are now being forced from their homes due to gentrification causing higher rental costs and higher home prices, making homeownership unattainable. Artists and musicians who helped to make the city, like other cities, cool, but whose former studios are now high-end condos or boutiques. Teachers struggling to make rent or buy home in the city where their students live. Those on a fixed income or empty nesters who wish to downsize but don't have the monthly income required by most rental agencies, equal to three times one's monthly rent. Those like me, who in 2017, at nearly 50 years of age and a single parent, following a health emergency, found myself jobless, in medical debt, and in need of affordable housing for my child and I. And this was with having a support system of family and friends, which sadly far too many do not have. I was finally able to find an apartment and a location that would allow my child to continue to attend their public school, Reynolds Middle School, a community school with a refugee center that truly wraps their arms around the needs of the children in community. However, the amount I now pay in rent is more than any previous mortgages. While much has changed, some things have not, like the Pennsylvania minimum wage, which has been at $7.25 since July 2009, the same year that I served on the county's homelessness coalition, and we discussed the need for a living wage. The cost of a specialty coffee for some is deemed acceptable as the minimum hourly rate for countless others. Many of us saw this coming. I spoke of it in an October 2007 Sunday Spotlight in the LNP Sunday News, when I said that preserving the character of the city without gentrifying it and making it unaffordable is the goal. There needs to be that balance as cities become more popular. So here we are. What can be done?
Ms. Parish?
Yeah.
Can we?
Absolutely. I didn't see, sorry. I shall wrap it up. I was waiting for the music to play me off. So I have a number of things that I could speak about and would love to share with you, some of the things I've learned while listening to residents during my walkabouts and interacting with them on neighborhood social media pages, as well as some ideas as to how we can address their concerns and needs. But I...
Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you for bearing with... Councilor Royal, please.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Parish, for presenting to us today. In your past experience as a neighborhood revitalization administrator for the city, what are some opportunities that you see that we can, as a body, council body, implement for revitalization as moving forward in an equitable way?
Revitalization and moving forward in an ethical way, did you say?
Equitable.
Oh, equitable way, absolutely. As far as interacting with the neighbors or providing financial support for certain neighborhoods?
Yep. So when we think about building up neighborhoods throughout the city, how do we do that in an equitable way that doesn't push people out and encourages folks that have been here for a long time to thrive with the city?
Sure. Well, and I know that affordable housing is, you know, on the top of your list, and that's certainly one of the things that I fully support and believe is achievable. So I would support the Housing First model. In the words of Bishop Desmond Tutu, "At some point, we need to stop pulling people out of the water. We need to go upstream and find out why they're falling in." But the truth is, it's nearly impossible to get out of the water while unhoused. So those experiencing homelessness with whom I've spoken over the years say the same thing. Basically, what it comes down to is their comprehensive needs aren't necessarily being met. So we're kind of shuttling people from here to there without focusing on the comprehensive needs. So that's one thing. I would increase affordable housing by exploring ideas such as rent control, inclusionary zoning, and requirements for developers to either include affordable housing in their plans or pay a percentage earmarked for other city projects specifically for affordable housing. I think that unfortunately, our city kind of operates in silos, quadrants, and so there are a lot of people that feel like, you know, their neighborhood may be getting more attention than other neighborhoods, not so much. So some of my ideas would be fostering unity amongst city residents and not looking at it as, you know, why are they getting more than we are, and not looking to the government to solve everything. But I don't know if that really answers your question, but that's, those are the kinds of things that I would look at.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all, Council President.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon, please.
Ms. Parish, thank you for being here this evening. In what ways do you believe that members of city council have the greatest impact on city residents?
Well, I think that your ability to listen to their needs, make sure that they know that they've been heard, is first and foremost the priority, you know? Whether one can deliver all the desires of every resident is not really, you know, what the council's about. It's about listening to their needs, thinking about the needs of the city as a whole, working with the current administration. You know, I worked with two different administrations, though my goal was to remain, you know, neutral and unbiased and kind of just look at the problems at hand. So you do have a tall order, for sure, and I, you know, it's admirable what you do. But again, I think that the most important thing, that residents feel like they're being heard and engaging them in the process.
Thank you. And if I may just briefly follow up, Ms. Parish, what motivated you to seek this position at this time?
At this time? It just, it was fortuitous timing. My child is autonomous at this point, and I was hoping to run in two years, and it's just kind of the right timing. I have the time to devote to it, and I would very much like to be a part of this current council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Presnet. Thank you, Mrs. Parish, for being here tonight. And I would like to know what interests you most about this position?
What interests me most is the ability to effectively make change, working with the people to do so, ensuring that the city thrives despite, you know, the challenges, and to embrace and celebrate our diversity. We may not be as integrated of a city as I would like to see, and therefore, you know, we're, just like the United States, we're a salad, we're not a melting pot. So having activities where we embrace all of our cultures at the same time, rather than, say, have specific cultural festivals, I think, would be a great way to create unity. So those things, you know, bringing my kind of event planning and prior experience to the government body and kind of bringing a little excitement to what I know, you know, people don't see as often an exciting thing, except people that like to read manuals, as the last gentleman said, which is admirable, but to get people excited about the process.
Okay, Mr. Presnet, can I?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. And why do you believe you would be the best choice for this appointment?
Because I am a very good listener. I'm approachable, and I have the experience, professional experience as well as personal experience, where I can empathize with people who have found themselves in situations like mine. And so they see that I am perhaps just like them, and that I can gain their trust, perhaps where others may not be looked at as like them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Presnet.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Craig?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Parish. What do you think Lancaster's most, maybe not the most, but the unique character of
Definitely its architectural features, and if you don't mind, I'm so sorry, I keep pitting that. Very briefly, I did have something regarding that as something I would like to be a part of focusing on if I were to be a councilperson. If we're truly to be a city authentic, as we say we are, then I believe we need to honor our historic structures. On any given day throughout our city, dumpsters can be seen full of the architectural features that once graced the interiors of homes being flipped. Features discarded for the latest trend, brick walls exposed without regard to the decrease in energy efficiency and increase in noise transmittal. Local business owner Evan Young is an excellent example of someone dedicated to painstakingly returning the buildings he owns to their original splendor. I believe if we're not careful, the very charm that people say brings them here will be lost. Neighborhoods will become homogeneous, and homeownership for those living here already will be completely out of reach.
And what do you personally love most about the city?
That's what I love most about the city, is the character. I've lived in historic homes most of my life, and I just feel like I'm honoring the spirits of those, you know, as it were, the families that lived there before. I love interacting with the people, of course, and there are things that I think that we could maybe improve, like having more to do for youth, especially downtown, if one doesn't partake in, you know, drinking alcohol or things, there's room for improvement, but the city's amazing. Having lived in major cities, I understand why people want to move here. I don't blame them in the least. I get it. But I don't want to lose the, like, keep Austin weird. That's something I have been, I've talked about Lancaster City in the past. I want to see the things that make the city unique, staying unique.
Thank you. That's it, Council President.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any additional questions? Ms. Parish, thank you very much for your time with us, and of course, we will be following up with next steps. Do you have any closing words for us briefly?
Very briefly. As New York City urban planner and neighborhood champion Jane Jacobs said, "Cities have the capacity of providing something for everybody only because and only when they are created by everybody." I would be honored to join you in being a part of ensuring that. Thank you so much.
We are well ahead of time, but Mr. Dale Schenk, if you are ready.
I'm as ready as I can.
All right, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, you good to go? He's gonna want to take your picture. Mr. Schenk, please begin with your full name and address.
Dale Allen Schenk, 518 West Frederick Street.
Mr. Schenk, are you 18 years of age?
Yes, I am.
Have you been a resident of the city of Lancaster for at least one year or more prior to today?
Yes, I have.
And do you hold any position or title which would preclude you from taking a seat on city council?
No, I don't.
Excellent. You have three minutes for an opening statement, please.
Yeah, thank you, Council President and the rest of the council staff. I appreciate the opportunity to take a few minutes, one, to introduce myself, hopefully answer the questions that you're going to ask of me, but I'm Lancaster-born and bred. In fact, I'm so Lancaster, I have the deed dated 1741, signed by William Penn Sons. So I've loved Lancaster City my whole life and Lancaster County. I'm a construction professional. I've been in the construction business over 40 years, and I have been, my unique trait, I believe, is I bring consensus, team building, and listening ear. I work with budgets, and I've been fortunate enough to have been involved with projects of all scope, size, caliber, budgets, entity, all over central Pennsylvania and throughout. I'd like to think that my construction experience and team building would be an asset to city council. Also love the city. I love living downtown. I love my refugee neighbors that share food with me. I love walking around the corner to grab a bite to eat. It's just, it's a great community. If I'm nominated or elected to fill in this position, I hope to just continue what you have started in making Lancaster what it is becoming.
Thank you, Mr. Schenk.
Thank you.
Please?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Schenk, for presenting to us today.
You're welcome.
What interests you in the position at this time? And then I'll follow up that with, what are some challenges that you see in the city that you feel that you can lend your that you feel that you can lend your expertise to help solving?
To answer your first part of your question, again, I'm at the point in my life where I have time to serve. I've been involved with Rotary projects, I've been involved on board level of Good Samaritan Services, and I just, again, I'm at, you know, I'm at the point in my life where I have the time, effort, and energy to participate. I see council as, you know, kind of the first line of defense. I don't see it as a political office. I see that Lancaster, although we've come a long way, we've had some challenges, and I'd like to think that my business and project management background could be an asset to what, you know, Lancaster for, at least for the next two years. I'm sorry, your second part of your question?
No worries. Thank you. Yeah, what challenges do you see in Lancaster City that you would like to lend your expertise to, to help create solutions for?
Well, again, everybody mentions the housing crisis. I mean, I've read the housing report. I understand, you know, we need to provide fair and equitable housing for everyone that wants to live within the city limits. With my construction experience, I've been in many, many projects throughout the city. I've been in some properties, some homes that people are living that no one should live in a home like that. So I feel strongly that everyone deserves a decent place to live.
Thank you. That's all, Council President.
Thank you, Council Royal. Councilor Baikay?
Thank you. In what ways do you believe that city council members have the greatest impact on city residents?
Well, I think we're the, you know, mostly residents don't want to be involved in any type of form of government, even at its lower level, but I think we are, as a councilperson, are the ears and the mouth for the residents that, you know, need the input. They need somebody that with leadership skills, that are willing to listen and build consensus to represent them.
And what motivated you to seek this position at this time?
One, the position is available. Two, I have the time in my life, as I previously mentioned. And again, I feel adamant in my love and admiration for the city, so I think it's an opportunity to serve.
And if I may, Mr. President, just ask one more follow-up?
Please.
What do you believe is the most significant challenge facing the city today?
There are several housings clearly near the top of that list, as we briefly talked about and as the other interviewees have talked about. To create affordable housing is an easy thing to say. I think there are some challenges to actually accommodating that. So there's a lot to understand when you say the catchword affordable housing. So I think that's a challenge. I think to follow up, if I may, the homeless population is challenges, and it's not really about homeless. I think it's a mental health issue. And I think as a council participant, I think there are a lot of organizations that have the resources and the wherewithal and the knowledge to help the homeless population. But I think as council, we can help facilitate that process and bring people together, again, have the conversation, and provide the help that that portion of the residents need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Schenk, for being here tonight. And how would you seek feedback from residents on proposed legislation?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah. How would you seek feedback from residents on proposed legislation?
Well, again, I'm an active neighbor, so in my little zone of the world, I communicate with my neighbors, porch conversations. I'm also a resident that does not cook, so I eat virtually every one of my meals in a local restaurant. So I'm going to be engaging and with residents in that through social media, Facebook, Instagram, whatever, just, you know, I think we need to, as a councilperson, we need to be accessible to the residents and listen to their concerns.
Okay. And would you please describe your neighborhood, and what do you think are the biggest concerns or priorities of your neighbors?
I'm fortunate, the street I live on, West Frederick Street, I think is a great street. It's a great diverse mix of residents. It's, I just love it. I mean, I moved in into the city two and a half years ago from suburbia, and my first day, my refugee neighbors handed me food across the fence, and I thought, oh my gosh, this is so cool. So it's a great community that we're engaged and look out for each other in the porch conversations and, you know, what's going on. And I happen to be in the block where the students from F and M are beating a pay off to the local bar, and even that, conversations with those kids and, you know, telling them to be safe and just, it's, I love my neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Craig. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Schenk. I already know that you love the city. I've heard you say that. With your contracting background, what do you believe are some of the most unique characteristics of Lancaster City?
Well, as other interviewees have mentioned, I think we have a tremendous mix of architecture and building styles, and it's just a unique eclectic aspect of, again, I love the architecture and the buildings, and the modern buildings or the traditional buildings. It's, you know, it's an asset.
Thank you. And if chosen for this position, what would make, what do you think, what would make you the best candidate?
My take on it, I think I'm, again, because of my long construction background, I have a track record of building consensus and putting teams together to achieve goals. And I feel confident in my abilities that as a council member, I could continue what you are doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council Craig. Counselors, are there any follow-up questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Schenk. We will, of course, follow up with next steps, and we appreciate the time you're spending with us this evening. Do you have any closing words for us?
Just a few. I'll keep it brief. Again, I appreciate the time and effort and the due diligence that you're going through to select the best candidate. One of the questions you didn't ask, that seems like a no-brainer to me, sorry to be so confident, but I understand that this person would most likely be providing some leadership over the Public Works Department. And I think my construction background, I don't want to simplify Public Works because it's a complex entity, but I do see it as a giant construction project, something that I'm very familiar and very adept to, again, listening to people and, you know, helping teams succeed at their goal. Follow-up, final detail is, again, I know that there's, I'm confident that I can also build consensus in what the mayor's office is doing and what the council's doing in communicating with the county government on fair distribution for the Cares funding. I think that's an important task that council's going to have to, or should be involved with as, you know, that process continues. So that, again, thank you very much for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He is not. But we are well, we are well ahead of time. Is Mr. Alex Thompson present? In that case, and counsel, momentico. In that case, and with council's forbearance, I see Ms. Katie Walsh is in the audience. Could we proceed with her interview since we are ahead of time? If you are ready? All right. We're going to ask you to please start with, sorry, please begin with your full name and your address.
Sure. Katie Walsh, 511 West James Street.
Thanks so much. Ms. Walsh, are you at least 18 years of age?
I am.
Or have you been a resident of the city of Lancaster for a year or more prior to today?
I have.
And do you have any title or position which would preclude you from taking a seat on city council?
I do not.
Excellent. You have three minutes for an opening statement.
Great. Thank you. So I want to begin by thanking city council and the administration for their leadership throughout the past few years. We all know this hasn't been an easy time and public service is often a thankless job. Additionally, I'd like to acknowledge those who have previously served to lay the groundwork for the foundation on which we are working today. I wouldn't have pursued this opportunity of service if it wasn't for my family, friends, colleagues, and mentors who are here with me today, in person and virtually. And I believe my background, personal, academic, and professional, has uniquely prepared me for this position. Understanding that council's focus is on the long-range vision for our community, it is with great enthusiasm I'm speaking with you today. So let's talk about long range. I was born and raised on the 300 block of College Avenue. My parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, and much of my extended family have also called this city home. Through the years, the city has provided employment, housing, and a sense of community we have relied upon for our livelihood. So the continued health and development of the city is of great importance to me and to those that I love. I'm a graduate of Temple University's Fox School of Business, and I received my master's degree from the University of Pennsylvania School of Social Policy and Practice, where I studied nonprofit leadership. I'm a graduate of Leadership Lancaster, and I currently sit on the Board of the Common Wheel, and I'm a trustee at the New School. I'm a small business owner. I own and operate a consulting firm where I provide strategic planning for financial development, strategic planning and financial development for nonprofit organizations. My career has focused exclusively on economic and community development with an undercurrent of education. Most recently, I've been working with a nonprofit organization to create innovative solutions for the incredible housing needs and demands of our community. I've worked across all sectors, public, private, and government, and know the process of setting goals and associated action items is paramount to long-term success and sustainability. The process of planning isn't always fun or exciting, but it is vital to any business, organization, or community's, community's success. Goals are what gives us hope, and action is how we stay accountable to one another. I have lived in cities both big and small, but I came home. I came home to share my education, skills, and perspectives, and hopes of contributing to and being a part of the future of Lancaster. As much as I've enjoyed speaking to you about my background, it is the future that I am most interested in discussing with your questions this evening.
Thank you.
Council Royal?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Walsh, for presenting to us today. Speaking of the future, what are some opportunities that you see for Lancaster, sorry, Lancaster City, and how would you like to contribute to that as a city counselor?
Yeah, absolutely. So the future, I think we have a wonderful amount of potential right now. As someone had previously mentioned, we're on the best of list. It is a great place to live, and it's a great place to pursue livelihood, or small business, and so forth. But one of the opportunities I think we really have at this point is to secure our future. We have a housing crisis that I believe that we have a real, you know, I look at it, it is a challenge, but it's also an opportunity to make some real change for the residents that are here and that will be eventually coming here, assuming that we have space and capacity for them to be here. So as a councilperson, what I'm really hoping to be able to have impact on is making sure that the policies that we do pass are both inclusive and helpful for affordable housing practices that we have in place, but then also that are friendly to businesses coming in, and the businesses that we do have here as well.
Thank you. That's all, Council President.
Thank you. Councilor Baikay?
Thank you for being here this evening, Ms. Walsh. In what ways do you believe that city council members specifically have the greatest impact on residents?
Yeah. So I see city council as a real, a real platform and a real voice for the people. You're the, you know, council are the folks that people go to to tell the good things that are happening, the bad things that are happening, and the things that we could do better. So I think just being a continued voice and speaking for folks is the greatest opportunity and really the greatest privilege of the, of the position.
Thank you. And if I could ask a follow-up, what motivated you to seek this position at this time?
Good question. I thought about that, and I thought about it when making the decision to put in my application, but I really think the timing is quite right. I think, given the challenges that we are faced with as a community at present, I think my background could really be helpful as we are looking at new policies and new funding sources and a lot of newness coming to the community. I just really think that my background could be quite useful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. And what do you believe is the value of diversity in our city?
I think it's invaluable. I think diversity is something that we, you know, we often speak about and that we hold in such high regard, but I think it's, it's really useful when it's enacted. I think it's only as strong as the perspectives that are being brought to the table and the voices that are being sought out. So I think we have some work to do here in Lancaster around diversity and engaging in the process or having diverse populations engaged in the process, but I think it's really invaluable to growing and being sustainable and having a successful future here.
At this time, the person filling this position would become the chair of the Public Works Committee. How do you feel your skills or background would serve you in that position?
I think my skills and background would serve me quite well. So I previously have worked for the Lancaster County Redevelopment Authority, and I was responsible for the management and oversight of the public infrastructure portfolio for the entire county. So I am very familiar with the policies and procedures of public improvements. So streets, sewers, and sidewalk were my bailiwick for about three years, and I could, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but I could still recite to you all the policies and the guidelines as it relates to HUD and the funding source for that. So I would say that I'm as well-equipped as I possibly can be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Craig?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Ms. Walsh, what do you love most about Lancaster City?
So I was hoping you'd ask that, and that was another one that I really had to take time and think about, and I thought about, you know, the reasons that I came back, and that was for love of family and community. So my family is here, my friends are here, my coworkers, organizations that I volunteer time with, so I think it's really that sense of community that I love so much.
I think we have one other question. Why would you be the best choice for this appointment?
I care. I really do care about the city, and I think having that level of care and compassion for its citizens hopefully puts me above and beyond the other candidates, in addition to my background and experience.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any follow-up or additional questions?
I do have one, Council President.
Please.
Ms. Walsh, could you describe your neighborhood and talk about what you believe are the most significant concerns of your neighbors?
Sure. So I have lived in my current apartment for about two months, so I'm still really getting to know my neighbors. So far, they're wonderful. Of what I do know about my neighbors now, the woman above me recently retired from a long career at the prison, and my surrounding neighbors have been there for over, oh my goodness, in one case, the gentleman had been there for over 20 years. Since I am near the college, there are college kids, and they're always fun and filled with excitement. And so I can't really speak to any challenges yet in that neighborhood, but where I was coming was from the 300 block of West King, which is quite different from the 500 block of West James. So my neighbors had been in their places, many of them for many years, multi-generations. I was also surrounded by small businesses who threw, you know, as I'm watching out my window, watching during COVID, many of them were food businesses or retailers who really struggled. So I will say that the neighborhoods are quite different, but in many cases, we're talking about generational residency.
Thank you.
Well, in that case, thank you very much, Ms. Walsh, for taking the time to come speak with us this evening. Of course, we'll be following up with next steps, but this is your opportunity to impart us any closing words.
I'll keep it brief since we're already running ahead schedule. I just want to say thank you to each of you, especially those that I've reached out to and were able to share your experiences with me. I really appreciated that, and I just looking forward to hopefully being a part of this team as we guide our city that we love so much into the future. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are significantly ahead of schedule, and as neither Mr. Shuba nor Mr. Thompson are here. Oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Shuba, come on down. First of all, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Can you please begin by giving us your full name and your address?
My name is John August Shuba. I live at 552 West Lemon Street.
Excellent. Are you at least 18 years of age?
Yes, sir.
Have you been a resident of the city of Lancaster for at least Have you been a resident of the city of Lancaster for at least one year or more prior to today?
Yes, sir.
And do you hold any title or position which would preclude you from taking a seat on council?
No, sir.
Excellent. You have three minutes for an opening statement. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, council, for your time today. My name is John Shuba. I live at 552 West Lemon Street. I'm 51 years old and married. My spouse and I have two adult children. I spent my life in Lancaster County. We've lived on Lemon Street for four years, and previously, we lived on East New Street. In 1995, I opened a business downtown with some friends. It's called Angry Young and Poor Records and Clothing, and we sold records and clothing, both in our online, or both at our retail store downtown and on a, on our website. For 25 years, I was an owner and operator of Angry Young and Poor. In 2019, I sold my shares to my partner, and I'm no longer involved with the business. Currently, I am self-employed as an artist. I sell my art at Building Character on North Queen Street, and I'm also employed part-time at Lowe's. My schedule is very flexible, and should I be offered a seat on city council, I would be able to make that my priority. For many years, I was registered to vote as a Democrat. Currently, I am not a member of a political party. I believe my experience as both a business owner and a resident of Lancaster City would be valuable for city council, and if offered the open seat, I would look forward to collaborating with all of you on ways to make the city better for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Royal, please.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mrs. Shuba, for presenting to us today. You have a unique perspective in being a previous small business owner as well as being an artist through those intersections. What opportunities do you see in those areas for Lancaster City moving forward?
Well, I'm, I think I've been seeing a lot of growth in Lancaster City in, in many aspects, from housing to, to businesses. I mean, that was the beauty of Lancaster City for us when we opened, was because there were opportunities for a small business to start up. I think the, the Southern Market reopening is a wonderful example of that, with their food stands that are, you know, catered to startup entrepreneurs. And, and I think that that's, Lancaster has that, and outside of the city, it's not so much.
And if I could just follow up, from a public art perspective, what are some opportunities that you can see that are exciting opportunities for the future around public art?
For public art? Oh, boy. You know, I, I think the public art of Lancaster is one of my favorite things. I just love walking around the city, you know, and not even just the statues and monuments, but the architecture as well is just unique, and I'm always amazed. Every, every block I walk, I always find something that just leaves me kind of speechless. But I, I think there are opportunities for more public spaces. I mean, pretty much everywhere there's a public space that's underutilized, there could be art there. And, and there's certainly plenty of artists around that would be willing and happy to offer ideas for, for those spaces. I think, I think art really makes every community, but ours in particular, I think the art really makes it a, a unique place in the world.
Great. Thank you. That's all, Council President.
Thank you. Counselor Baker?
Good evening, Mr. Shuba. Thank you for being here with us this evening. In what ways do you believe that members of city council have the greatest impact on city residents?
Well, I, I would say city council, along with the mayor, are kind of the face of Lancaster City, and the, whether it's official or not, their city council is, you're almost like the spokespeople for the city, you know? People in, I think people in the county don't often understand Lancaster City, and I think the voices of city council are, you know, kind of help sort of bridge that gap to, you know, the outside community.
Thank you. And may I follow up, Council President? What motivated you to seek this position at this time specifically?
You know, it was, it's a very unique opportunity to be able to potentially be on city council without having to campaign, campaign for it. I'll be honest with you, because I don't have any background in politics, and the thought of, of running for a seat, it was, it was kind of so daunting that I just hadn't really, it just hadn't really crossed my mind. So this seemed like just a wonderful, unique opportunity that, you know, I, I felt I couldn't pass up at least the opportunity to go before the council and make myself known.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for being here tonight, sir. What do you believe is the value of diversity in our city?
Well, I, I think Lancaster, Lancaster City, it's kind of the wonderful melting pot of Lancaster County. So many cultures, recent immigrants, not-so-recent immigrants, languages, foods, like everything is just, just a wonderful explosion in Lancaster City, which, and again, you don't really get that once you leave the city limits. And, and it's wonderful. I mean, it's a, it's a slice of what America should be.
At this time, the person filling this position would become the chair of the Public Works Committee. How do you feel your skills or background would serve you in that position?
Well, I mean, from being a business owner, you know, we were responsible certainly for the upkeep of our own building, but as well as the, you know, sidewalks and, and, you know, the, the look of the building from the outside. So, I mean, I'll be honest, I, I don't feel I have a lot of experience in that regard. However, I'm a, I'm a quick learner, and I would give it my all.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Craig?
Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Mr. Shuba. What are some of the challenges in your neighborhood?
Well, I live about two blocks away from the vacant St. Joe's Hospital campus, and, and from what I understand, there are plans in the works for the campus, and from what I've heard of those plans, I think, you know, I'm pretty excited. I think if, if it follows through the way it's been, you know, the way I anticipate it will, I think it will be wonderful. But certainly, within the neighborhood, you know, right now, it's a big empty lot, and there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of possibility with that and a lot of options, and I think naturally, you know, people can get a bit apprehensive when they don't know exactly what's going to be going on there, either the finished product or any disruptions during construction. Yes, that's it.
And, and what do you love most about Lancaster City?
What I like most about Lancaster City?
What do you love most about the city?
I, I love that I can walk and ride my bike anywhere in the city. It's, you know, from one end to the other, I mean, it, it's still a good-sized city, but it, it's, it's very livable, and it's very, it's very approachable. I love that we are a haven for independent small businesses. I think those kind of businesses give Lancaster, along with the artwork, its very unique character. And people, outsiders, come to Lancaster City because there is, there are businesses there that they're not going to find anywhere else. You know, they can't go to the mall and find a lot of the unique, wonderful businesses we have downtown. That's it.
Thank you. And then one last question. If chosen for this appointment, why do you think you would be the best fit?
Well, as I said, I do have experience as both a business owner and a resident of the city, and, and my schedule, as I've stated, is very wide open. I, I would sort of think of myself as like a utility infielder in baseball, where if there's a need, whatever, you know, I, I, I don't assume to, to know all the ins and outs of city council, obviously, but I like to think that if there were a need, I would be able to step in and fill that need to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any other, please?
Mr. Shuba, what do you think would be the unique perspective that you could bring to our city council?
My unique perspective?
Yes.
Oh, certainly. Well, I mean, besides being a business owner and a resident, I, I grew up in, in Lancaster County, outside of the city. I went to Penn Manor, and, and so I think that perspective could be valuable, like as kind of, because Lancaster City, as much as I said, we are unique from the rest of the county, we are still part of Lancaster County. And I think growing up in the county, you know, I, I kind of have a little bit of an understanding of how, you know, of what life is like in the county and how it relates to the city, and I think that perspective, I think that perspective would be valuable.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. One more time, Councillors, any follow-up questions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Shuba, thank you so much for taking the time to come speak with us this evening. Of course, we'll be following up with next steps, but now is your opportunity to offer us any final words.
Well, thank you again so much. Again, I, I do view this as a really unique opportunity, and, and regardless of who you decide for the position, I really appreciate you taking the time today.
Thank you, sir. So as I was going to say previously, since we don't have our last interview, let's take a five-minute bio break since we are a little early, if you need to stretch your legs or anything.[1295.76] Take your coat off, take a second, it's okay. We are very early. Mr. Alex Thompson, good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Doing very, doing very well. So we're just going to ask you, also a mess tonight, we're just going to ask you to start with your full name and your address.
Sure. Alex Thompson, my address is 314 North Arch Street, Lancaster, PA, 17603.
Okay, great, mister. And then, sorry. Mr. Thompson, you are 18 years of age or older?
Yes.
And you have been a resident of the city of Lancaster for at least one year prior to today?
Correct.
And do you hold any title or position which would preclude you from taking a seat on city council?
No.
Excellent. You have three minutes for an opening statement, please proceed.
Great. Council and all in attendance, thank you for your time this evening. Very excited to have the opportunity to speak. As noted, my name is Alex Thompson. Some background, I spent the majority of my life growing up in Lancaster County. I was born and raised in Effort, PA, and currently live in the Chestnut Hill neighborhood. As noted, I'm grateful to be here this evening and look forward to the opportunity to serve the community that I so much enjoy living in. So for some more background on myself, after graduating from Penn State University in 2016, I spent five years as a consultant within the Big Four, supporting and leading global business transformations, specifically focused on my clients, employees, and the impacts of change on their roles and their careers. Recently, as of the start of January, I've moved to an internal role with the UGI Corporation, continuing to serve and kind of lead global HR projects, keeping in mind and focusing on driving beneficial change for employees from the bottom to the top of the organization. Through my experience, through my career experience, if there's one thing that I've learned, it's really that change can be difficult, but it's necessary for the progress for both business and society. And if it's done thoughtfully and in the correct manner, it can be mutually beneficial to all involved, even those who are initially resistant to that change. It's with this mindset that I am excited to bring to the Lancaster City Council and utilize within my role with the council. My key interest in joining council, starting from the top, but not necessarily in terms of priority, would be to continue the sustainable incubation of small business within the community. I'm incredibly encouraged and excited about the recent opening of Southern Market, but specifically the involvement of the Assets Organization, which will provide the businesses involved with Southern Market the opportunity to grow and expand outside of the confines of that market, opening up new opportunities for additional businesses in the future to take their place and continue to grow as well. Within Lancaster, I think we're truly blessed to have so many creative and talented minds, but also from a variety of walks of life and an incredible amount of diversity. It's important that we maintain these opportunities and continue to foster them, because otherwise, these opportunities might be seen as unobtainable by some. In addition to fostering and kind of helping to grow small business in sustainable ways, I hope to focus on the homeless population within our city. Unfortunately, this has become so prevalent within our city, but also across our entire country. While I don't have a solution to propose this evening, I intend to view this situation, not from the eyes of the city that's impacted by the homeless population, but from the eyes of the individuals that are involved with it. It's not enough to support and provide these individuals with shelter. We must continue to provide opportunities for them, to set them up for sustainable life improvement and life betterment, to help kind of break the cycle that can be homelessness. In wrapping up here, I may not be the individual that you've spoken with this evening that has the most relevant experience in local government. However, I believe that my career has shown success in leading large-scale change initiatives. And I believe at 28, I can bring a fresh voice to our community and represent a generation that may not be as represented on the board today. It also is to note that the vacancy within this position is filled, or has been vacated by someone of my age. So I look forward to continue that representation on the council and fill that role accordingly. That's kind of my intro and kickoff, and I look forward to any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We'll begin with councillor Royal.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for presenting to us today.
Absolutely.
As far as opportunities for the future, what are some that you see in Lancaster City as opportunities for growth or for equitable improvement throughout the city?
Sure. So as I noted, I'm excited about what's Southern Market in terms of kind of the opportunities that's opened up. While that kind of impacts the central area of downtown Lancaster, I see additional opportunities as we continue to spread out the city, taking, for example, West End Market, which is in the process of being revitalized and kind of brought to speed to open those opportunities to businesses. I just, I really, so like I noted, I'm excited about the opportunity for kind of small businesses within the city. But I think it's important to kind of open up those opportunities to folks that might not be prepared for those roles and kind of to foster and teach them to kind of facilitate and lead to the growth of those businesses.
Thank you. Let's talk, Council President.
Thank you, councillor Royal.
Good evening, thank you for being here.
Evening.
In what ways do you believe that members of city council have the greatest impact on residents?
Sure. I think the role as city council is to kind of be the voice of the people within our city. We are individuals that serve in roles outside of the government, kind of walk side by side, our constituents and those who we represent. So we're often kind of the first ear of those individuals. So we can hear their concerns, their interests, and help to drive the growth and the interests of the folks that live within our cities, because we act with them on an individual basis every day within our lives.
And what motivated you to seek this position at this time specifically?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think the opportunity was too good to pass up when I initially saw that the vacancy was created. I had recently been going through a change in my career, and I was looking for, and given that change in my career, I opened up a bit more kind of free time. In my past career, I was pretty involved with specifically focusing on my work. And just for transparency, I moved back to Lancaster in August of 2020. And when I did so, I've really kind of quickly grown to love the community that I live in and have been looking for ways to give back and contribute. But my personal obligations did not align with that. But like I said, I've kind of switched over to a new role at the start of January, right around the time that this vacancy opened up. So the opportunity was too good to pass up. And I think it's just a great way for me to contribute and give back to my community in a very kind of focal way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
And what do you, what do you believe is the value of diversity in our city?
Absolutely. So as I kind of noted in my introduction, I think Lancaster is blessed to have an incredible amount of diversity within our city. We have so many individuals from different walks of life, whether that be refugees or just different cultures that have migrated to the city and have kind of grown up and built their families here. I think the value of diversity is that we have so many opportunities to kind of tap into that diversity and create unique opportunities for individuals in our city that may not have been exposed to that diversity during their day-to-day, whether that be through cultures and different foods within the city, unique types of businesses, or really just kind of learning and accepting different people in our community. The diversity is incredibly important, and it's certainly been a hot topic within our country over the past, I mean, always, but specifically in the spotlight over the past few years. So I think kind of informing individuals about the diversity and speaking to them about the benefits is going to bring everyone along and kind of make for a better, better community for all.
And at this time, Mr. Thompson, the person filling this position would become the Chair of the Public Works Committee. How do you feel your skills or background would serve you in that position?
Sure. So my experience does not specifically relate to public works by any means. However, I have significant experience leading large-scale projects from a project management perspective and learning new and challenging topics. So in my role as a consultant, I was often tasked with coming into new roles, whether that be with new organizations and new businesses, learning those businesses and learning the project at hand, and really kind of getting up to speed within the first couple of days of being assigned to those projects. So I think my experience in kind of leading large projects, but also my ability to quickly learn and pick up on new tasks, as well as my project management structure, will speak well to there. I pride myself in being able to drive projects to completion from project planning through to kind of the accountability of all individuals involved and making sure that the project ends as a success and kind of tracking towards those key KPIs of projects.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councillor Craig.
Sure.
So sorry, I apologize.
Oh, no, no problem.
Heard you fine. The question was, what are some challenges in your neighborhood?
Sure. So I think I live in kind of a unique portion of Chestnut Hill. So I'm in North Arch, it's right off the alley next to Root Restaurant. The surrounding neighborhood, I would say, has quite a lot of dichotomy in terms of housing, in terms of income as well. So I think there's a lot of, and I see this as kind of a challenge across the city as a whole. There's a lot of kind of development coming in, whether that be through people flipping houses, and it's pushing out renters and kind of preventing that diversity within our city. I am encouraged by what I've seen from the city as a whole in terms of supporting and maintaining affordable housing. I know we've got quite a lot of condos and new construction coming in, but I have been encouraged by the requirements of the city to have some affordable housing allocated to those structures. And I think this is kind of where we need to continue to focus. It's incredibly relevant to Chestnut Hill as it continues to build up and get kind of, I guess gentrification would be the correct term to use there. But it's important to think about the folks that have lived there and kind of built their lives and maintain opportunities for them to have a role in our city, be homeowners, push for affordable home programs and encourage and spread the information of those programs so they're accessible to individuals who may not be aware of them.
Mr. Thompson, what do you love most about Lancaster City?
I think it, so from the start, I guess most would mean a singular answer, but it's kind of tough to do. First off, I'd have to kind of note the diversity within the city. There's so many great restaurants, and that's thanks to kind of the cultures that we have in our city and just kind of the unique people that live here with us. Also, kind of the accessibility. Living downtown, I feel like I have access to everything I need. I rarely drive out of the city to kind of, to do my shopping or get the things that I need, just because, one, I love supporting the local businesses that we're so blessed with to have in Lancaster here. But it's just also so accessible to be able to walk anywhere and kind of access those goods.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councillors, any follow-up questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay. Mr. Thompson, thank you so much for taking the time to be here with us this evening. Of course, we have your materials, and we'll be following up with next steps. But right now is your opportunity to leave us with any closing words.
Yeah, sure. I just kind of want to reiterate the fact that I know I'm probably not the most qualified from a local government perspective in terms of folks that you've spoken with. But I do think my career success and my, I do think my career has kind of spoken to my success in leading change and large-scale initiatives. So I think I'll be a really great fit here. And I think it's important to have representatives from my generation, because we are kind of the future of the city. I'm very in tune with a lot of individuals within the city and can kind of take their feedback and bring that to the council. But it's also important to kind of incorporate the opinions of all, not just, not one specific group within the city, but kind of manage the various stakeholders and come to a collective decision that's going to lead to the best things for our cities and the individuals that live here. Again, I'm excited for the opportunity. I know I'm not probably the most qualified, but I think, I think I'll do a great job, and I'm really excited for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Harris, does that conclude our interviews for the evening?
Yes, Mr. President, it does.
Excellent. Well, thank you for, or thank you to everyone for bearing with us through the interviews, especially if you've been watching along from elsewhere. And I just want to thank everybody who's applied one more time for presenting yourself like this. It's not an easy thing to do, and I have, I think I can speak for all of council when I say I have immense respect for anyone who would submit themselves to this process. I think we all know how intense being in that space can feel. So while we'll be following up with each of the applicants in, you know, sorry, individual, we'll be following up with each of the applicants to let them know next steps. The sort of next and final big stop is the council meeting on February 8th, which will be held right here. And simply put, sorry, the appointment will function like any other resolution-level action of council. A motion will be made to appoint a particular person. That motion must receive a second and four votes to succeed. And if that motion succeeds, whoever is named in the motion will take the vacant chair on city council and ostensibly serve for the rest of councillor Garcia Molina's unexpired term. If you have any questions about the process, whether you are a community member or a participant, you can reach me or mr. Harris at ourcityemails. You should have access to both by this time. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.